Nala Hesler-Tan Guahan is called to order. If I may ask, Senator Yamashita, you can lead us in prayer.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, as we proceed with the 32nd Guam Legislature, please provide us with the courage, the focus, the compassion, the intelligence, the ability to work with one another as we deliberate policies in the best interests of our families. Dear Lord, as we recovered from the Tumon tragedy, we give thanks to all of those who stepped forward and helped restore calm, who helped provide health care, who helped pray for all of our victims who were tragically impacted. As well, dear Lord, let us pray for Chad and his family. As we make sense of what causes somebody to act out like that, we all know that drug abuse is something that needs to be whittled away at even more, and that family support is needed to help him and his family figure out what happened and how it happened, and that we receive a strong message that drug abuse shall not be used, that mental illness needs to be addressed, and that family support needs to be strengthened. We thank you, Lord, for your strength and your goodness. In this, we pray.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Munia Barnes, if you can lead us in the recitation of the Inefresi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues can join me. Inefresi.
And I'd like to ask the following senators to lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorah by Senator Duñez, and the singing of the National Anthem by Senator Frank Ogun Jr.
(singing) 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 (singing)
Thank you very much, senators. I'd like to ask the clerk to please take roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Lim Tiaco. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respecho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklis. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of legislative journals, all subject to correction, January 7, 2003, January 11, 2003, January 26, 2013, I'm sorry. And I'd like to advise the body that the clerk has prepared these journals, and they've all been uploaded to the legislature's website.
Thank you very much. On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to a session journal.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
There are messages from Imagala in Guam, and I also move that these messages be appended to a session journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that they be appended to a session journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees, so if I could proceed to item 12. Item 12, Madam Speaker, the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that bill numbers 41-32, as well as bill numbers 44-32, this one is a COR, to bill number 44-32 COR, and resolution number 37-32 COR to resolution number 40-32 all be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion is that any resolutions or certificates of condolence or commensary in nature that's introduced for this legislative session, that it be automatically adopted, and that all senators be co-sponsors, and that the clerk work with the main sponsor and the legal counsel in the preparations of these documents.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, the next motion is more of a housekeeping motion, and it's that when we're in the second reading file, you see here a listing of bills, and 11 bills and two resolutions. Some of these bills are pending the submission of committee report, so if in the event we get to that item on the second reading file, and there's a committee report still pending, or the author would like more time, or more information is required, I move that these items be moved aside, not lose its place, and come back when the author has signaled you that they're ready to deliberate on that matter.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under legislative concurrence, from the Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation on the appointment of Mr. Carl V. Dominguez to serve as the Director of Department of Public Works, with the recommendation to confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And the other two items, Madam Speaker, I believe are still pending public hearing, and so that'll be done during the duration of this session. If in the event the chairman wishes to move forward, then I would make the motion at that time.
Thank you very much.
So there are no other items pending other than proceeding now to the second reading file.
Thank you. So we are in the second reading file, and my understanding is, from the clerk, that bills number 1 and 2 have yet to be duplicated, reproduced, so therefore, we're going to move on then to item number 3, which is bill number 8-32 COR, and I recognize the primary author, Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that bill number 8, an act to appropriate to the Department of Education, all additional revenue derived from the expiration of any part of the Bush tax cut, I move that this be placed in the voting file with some discussion, third reading file, rather.
Yes, so you like the third reading, and you'd like to discuss it. You may proceed.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. First, I'm grateful to Speaker Pangolinan for having a public hearing in this bill, and for issuing a committee report that if passed by us and signed into law by the governor, would take any and all additional revenues derived from the expiration of any part of the Bush tax cuts, and set that aside, and automatically appropriate it to the Department of Education, so that they could use these funds for the purposes of school repair, school renovation, and basically making our commitment more tangible by passage of this bill. And so, we all understand that President Obama and the Congress were going back and forth as to the amount of money that they should cap for taxable incomes, and under the Bush tax cuts, when those tax cuts expired, President Obama was hoping for a $250,000 threshold, but what he was able to negotiate and get through Congress was a $400,000 cap. When this bill was first introduced, they were looking at as upwards of $20 to $30 million if the president had his way, but since the president didn't have his way with Congress, and because they had to negotiate and come some sort of to a compromise, they raised the taxable income level up to $400,000. But even still, Madam Speaker, it would mean additional revenues to the United States Treasury, and because Guam is mirrored, the federal income tax code is, Guam's income tax code is mirrored with the federal income tax code, we're going to see some of those additional revenues as well. And committee appropriations is estimated to be almost $1 million, but I guess even still, this $1 million is real cash that we can be providing for the Department of Education, and so I hope our colleagues will support it. I hope it'll pass. I hope the governor will sign it, and I hope we can start to identify some monies within the general fund to begin to have systemic-wide upgrades to our school infrastructure. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motions, does anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you, and Soodus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, you know, it's kind of with mixed feelings as chairman of the committee that is supposed to take a look at a budget from a holistic perspective, that I have to deal with this bill. Of course, I would rather that we deal with appropriating money from the entire budget act itself, but what this basically does is it does set aside the additional revenues that we will realize from the increase of the, from the reenactment of the tax cuts, basically for those individuals earning, I think it's $440,000 or $500,000 a year, where those individuals had their income tax rates raised to pay for some of the ongoing problems that the federal government is facing with regards to its own deficit, as well as the sequestration issue and matter that we have to face with cuts within the departments and the federal agencies, most notably the Defense Department, and of course, as they always say, but do not do, maybe some of the entitlement programs such as Social Security and the Defense Department, and Medicare. But I realize that what this does is it provides the additional revenue for the Department of Education, and certainly the Department of Education, we know, needs additional resources in order to get its planning in place and move forward. I do want to say that last year, the Department of Education was withheld almost $4 million by this administration and not released, and the Department of Education was able to adjust its spending to meet that withholding of $4 million in appropriations to the Department of Education. We haven't seen what that impact yet, what that impact that has, because we haven't had a report from them at this time on what they did not pay from the withholding of $4 million. We know they didn't pay the teacher furloughs. We know they didn't buy books. We know there were many things that they forego when this administration withheld $4 million of the appropriation. Now remember, the administration last term said that they were going to put a 15% reserve for all departments and agencies, and so they were going to withhold $30 million from the Department of Education. And both myself, as the chairman of the committee, Mr. Bodasi, as executive director of the Office of Finance and Budget, and the Office of the Public Auditor, and the public auditor herself, Ms. Doris Brooks, advised the governor that that could not happen, that if he withheld the $30 million or 15% from the Department of Education budget, we would have had to close the schools or not open the schools come this fiscal year. And so the governor continued on the track, and he said he was, "No, no, no, they have enough money." And in the end, I guess he realized that he had to release the 15%. So we know that it's always a struggle, no matter where we're at in the budget cycle, to try and manage the cash flow and the appropriations as well of this government to meet the operational requirements of the departments and agencies. So what we're going to have to do is balance this. As we dedicate this revenue stream to the Department of Education, we may have to maneuver and move other revenue streams when the budget time comes to try and balance it out with the other needs of the departments and agencies. But I certainly want to commend the author of the bill for continually thinking about and prioritizing education, and I think that this is something that we're going to move forward on, and we're going to do, but realizing that once the budget comes and we address the budget, we're going to have to do some balancing on this thing. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly voice my continued support for anyone who wants to ensure that we provide the resources to our children within the public schools and to meet the needs of their education. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Soodus Massey.
You're welcome, Madam Speaker Pangolinan. On the motion, recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I stand in full support of bill number 8-32, and I appreciate the author's foresight in taking advantage of an opportunity, as he's always alert to what's in front of us. I do hope that if this measure passes, and if it's signed into law, that the superintendent, in that one phrase, "to fund school operations," ensures that our classrooms and their needs, whether it's school supplies or materials, to include those classrooms that work with our children with disabilities, are all included in this monies that may be coming their way. We certainly know that we continue to have many school repairs and renovation needs identified as we move forward. And along those lines, I do hope, I know this money won't be enough, but I do hope that the superintendent keeps in mind the need for a master plan that we had passed last term, that he needs to find a way to get that in place, so that we use all monies coming in as wisely as possible, so that we can start repairing and renovating as we move on. So Madam Chair, I stand in full support of this, and I thank the author of this bill for proffering this measure. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Frank Ogun Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Soodus Massey, Madam Speaker. I guess I've been out of the auto circulation for a couple of years, so I'm not really familiar with the requirements of the Department of Education, but we all know that the superintendent, as well as members of the board, have always raised concerns about their budgetary allocation. I just asked the good chair of finance as to what the approximate amount may be, and I thank him for sharing with me, but this particular legislation would require that estimate to be provided by the Department of Revenue and Tax. The only question I have is twofold. One is, why is it during the course of the transition and the preparation of the report that Revenue and Tax was not able to at least provide some inkling of what the cost would be? Because the good chair of finance mentioned that it could conceivably be up to $1 million. And that's $1 million that could benefit our classrooms, could benefit our students in the public educational system. I'd like to also say that as we look at providing additional resources, I'm not too sure where the expenditures of the IRA funds, that process is at this point in time. So that's another part of the equation that I guess I find kind of interesting in terms of, okay, they had about two years ago, $60 million to expend within a year, that was extended an additional year, where are they in terms of expending all of those resources? We know that a few of us have been participants in ribbon-cutting ceremonies, such as the Southern High School, Gymnasium, such as some of the other improvements in our public educational system, and I think that's excellent, because it shows that some of those resources, the IRA funds, are being expended. I certainly hope that we don't have to move in the direction of further extending that. But that has little relevance to perhaps bill number 8, but if you look at the overall picture, where would these resources be allocated based on the requirement of the Department of Education? You know, we can always conjecture whether it's going to go to summer school, whether it's going to go into the classroom, whether it's going to go to repairs, whether it's just going to go to general operations, and then trying to identify and be a little bit more specific in terms of how the resources will be expended is always a concern that I have, knowing full well that we're providing some additional needed resources to our Department of Education. And I take, I guess, personal stake at this, Madam Speaker, only because this morning I had the wonderful privilege of dropping off two of my grandchildren over at M.U. Lohann Elementary School. So when I look at that, and I look at some of the teachers and some of the employees over at that particular school doing the best they possibly can, I certainly hope that these resources would get either into the classroom or upgrading the facility for safety purposes. So I stand in support of this particular measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I'd just like to rise to a point of information. We did send a letter to the Department of Revenue and Tax requesting that they provide us an estimate of what the Bush tax cuts and reenactment of certain tax cuts would yield in terms of additional revenues to the government of Guam, and we did not get a response. The million-dollar figure I quoted to the retiring speaker was a pretty rudimentary analysis that we did, not being able to go into the tax system and stratify the income levels, and how many people make certain income levels, and what that would yield. But just being able to do it based upon tax returns and the stratification of tax returns. But we did send a letter to Revenue and Tax, we did not get a response, but we're pretty comfortable that it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of a million, maybe a little bit more, but not much more than that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that information. On the motion, Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would first like to commend the author of this legislation. I've been visiting the schools since the start of the term, and been taking a lot of pictures of facilities that are in desperate need of repair, restrooms, ceilings, all kinds of facilities that need to be fixed. And when we talk about appropriating a sum of money that wasn't originally appropriated in the budget bill, I would like for that appropriation to go specifically to a lasting improvement, something that's not going to just be expensed and then added on as a line item when it comes down to the budget discussion. And so I would like for the author to consider amending the bill, particularly page 2, line 18, to strike school operations on line 18, and to instead just have the funds directed towards school repairs and renovations. I think that it's very important that our students have a very good learning environment. I've taken pictures of restrooms that are in terrible state of falling apart, and I really believe that if this money is going to be coming in, it wasn't appropriated originally in the budget bill, and we want to get a lasting impact from these funds, it would be good for us to have it expensed in a way that's going to have a year-over-year benefit for the students, rather than just an initial operational benefit for the school system. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. There is a motion then on page 2, line 18, to then delete "school programs" and to have it reflected, "to fund school repairs and renovations," is that correct, Senator?
Line 18, Madam Speaker, "school operations."
But to fund...
To fund school operations and school repairs and renovations?
Yes, so we're going to delete "school operations" and...
Correct.
Okay, so on that amendment, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I object to the amendment. I object because I think the superintendent needs to be the one to decide what is the priority of need. I certainly agree with the author of the amendment that school repairs and renovations are needed across most of our schools, as maybe we have six relatively new facilities, but most of them are 30 to 40 years old, so I understand, and I do agree, our bathrooms, our grounds, our gyms, those all need help. But we also know that there are many classrooms that don't have basic types of supplies, where our children can engage in intellectual activities and move forward in learning. And so I think the superintendent and the principals should be able to decide, if they get this money, how to best use it for their school communities. And I would like to leave that up to the superintendent. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
On the amendment, does anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Frank Ogun Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues on my right, no, this is not going to be the norm of the 32nd Guam Legislature, just because of this legislation. And I'm sure the speaker knows what I'm talking about. But, Madam Speaker, I was, just in reference to the amendment to the legislation, I certainly stand in full support of that, because these are additional revenues, above and beyond what was appropriated by this legislative body in the last term. And as I read the comments from Mr. Robert Millay during the course of the public hearing, he stated, "It would be our preference to utilize this funding to address much-needed school repairs, or to provide schools with equipment or instructional supplies." That came directly from the deputy superintendent of the Department of Education representing the superintendent of the department. So I certainly stand in support of this. I was going to proffer an amendment to include equipment and instructional supplies, but we all know that the cost of repairs right now, and I mentioned that in my previous statement, ensuring safety for our kids in our schools, continues to be paramount. So I stand in support of the proposed amendment to the legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thought about doing what the author of this amendment is attempting to do, but then I thought about it again, and said that in order for us, for me, to support the Department of Education, the Guam Education Policy Board, and that leadership structure, we have to give them not only the resources to the extent possible, but also give them the flexibility to use these resources for emergencies, or for, and I'm not thinking that they're going to take this money and go hire a whole bunch of people, because the Budget Act will prevent them from doing that. I think when we make it clear that to fund school operations and school repairs and renovations, as provided for in Public Law 31-229, that's, Public Law 31-229 is going to be the framework to which these monies are to be applied. And if you recall, this public law was a law sponsored by Senator Guthers and co-sponsored by us, and it passed the last legislature, I believe unanimously, I believe it passed unanimously, Madam Speaker, that would provide... I believe it passed unanimously, Madam Speaker, that would provide system-wide upgrades to the entire school facilities throughout the Department of Education. And one of the fallbacks of this law is finding a funding source to fully implement this law. And so, little by little, slowly but surely, we're identifying unanticipated revenues, setting aside what those revenues could be better used for, and recognizing that a better use of these funds would begin to improve the school facilities throughout the island. And so, I understand the argument and the rationale behind removing school operations, but I just don't want to send the wrong message that we're not going to trust the Department of Education, the Guam Education Policy Board, and the new management team. When they came to the public hearing to testify in favor of this bill, even without talking to them prior to the public hearing, they were on the same page. They were saying that they would want to apply these monies to make some lasting improvements to the education system as opposed to funding day-to-day operations.
Thank you, Senator Rispia. On the amendment? There being none, and there is an objection, so I'm going to call then for the vote. All in favor of the amendment, which is on Page Two, Line Eighteen, to delete the word "school operations" and, so the new language would be "to fund school repairs and renovations." All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment failed. So, on still the main motion, does anybody else who would like to speak in it? Senator Mike Limchak, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm concerned with the bill in one aspect, and potentially the author can have clarification or yield to a question, but my concern is regarding the actual estimate for these, the additional revenues that might be associated with these tax cuts. The true impact of the tax cuts may not be known until, you know, these individuals file their tax returns, which would be the following year. So, what exactly are we appropriating? Is there a finite number that we are appropriating, or are we appropriating on estimates? And if the author can just clarify that for me, I'd appreciate it.
I will. The author yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and that's a very, very good question. Because we don't really know what the final number will be, what this bill does if it becomes law, it would require the Department of Revenue and Taxation to, it's all in Section Two, that within thirty days of the enactment of this act, the Director of Revenue and Tax shall provide a written estimate of the additional revenue that would occur to the government of Guam as a result of the expiration of any part of the Bush tax cut. So, they would provide that written estimate once they have it, and then whatever estimate they provide and transmit to the legislature, then Section Three provides that those monies will be appropriated from the General Fund to Department of Education for additional current-year revenues. And then it instructs DOE on how to apply these unanticipated revenues.
Did he answer your question, Senator?
Madam Speaker, if I could, the bill specifically cites that the additional revenues for fiscal year 2013. So, the estimate, am I correct in the author's explanation that we're going to be appropriating based on an estimate, and in the event that this estimate is wrong, that we've appropriated money that doesn't exist?
No. So, Senator, do you yield to that question?
Yeah, no, you would appropriate whatever that number is. So, the appropriation will come after the assessment is made by the Revenue and Taxation and certified that this is the number, and then so that amount will be appropriated to the Department of Education from the General Fund. If you don't appropriate and then the estimate's provided, it'll be just the opposite. You provide, once the estimate is received, then the appropriation will follow.
Senator, you still have the floor.
Okay, but Senator Rispia, would this impact the 2013 budget? Or it seems as though if they're going to be filing their taxes in the year 2014, that this wouldn't necessarily be available until that point in time. Would it be considered like some sort of lapse fund or something?
Senator, do you yield to that question? Who would you like to address your question to? Speaker Panglinen, you're recognized. Maybe do you yield to that question to respond? No, you don't. We can't have a conversation like this, Senator. I would like for you to... Yes, can you just please at least explain that?
Maybe just the mechanics, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, all the three guys that make over four hundred thousand on Guam, their taxes will go to the Department of Education, or half a million, I think. So, that's really what it is. This number, what this will is the tax rate that is applied to individuals earning half a million or more. So, we could calculate that number, but as the question of that this is, we don't know what we're doing because it's an estimate. When we budget, the governor sends down his estimated revenues, and we budget based upon the estimated revenues that is adopted by the SES and recommended to this body or as changed by this body by its actions on the floor. So, it's not like we have five hundred million in the bank and then we appropriate five hundred million. It's the governor sends down his revenue estimate that says, "We project that we will collect five hundred million next year," and the legislature usually appropriates either up to five hundred million or sometimes a little bit less, Madam Speaker. So, that's the mechanics of how the budget would work and how this would fold into the budget process.
Thank you very much for that explanation, Senator Panglinen. You still have the floor, Senator Limchak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess maybe I need to clarify. The bill specifically is appropriating the funds for the 2013 budget. My point is, is that the actual true results of the tax cuts, because these individuals could have several qualifying events that would change the estimate, therefore, it seems as though the funds would be better appropriated to maybe the 2014 budget when you get a true indication of what those tax payments or tax revenues end up resulting in. So, I guess my point of clarification, if it would, is that potentially that it's in the wrong budget year? Maybe it should be in 2014?
Would the author yield whether 2013 or 2014 is the more appropriate year for to realize these savings to be appropriated? Would you like a minute recess?
No, Madam Speaker. I mean, the idea is to get this money to DOE as quickly as possible, and given that there's no deficit and a ten million dollar surplus, once these monies can be certified by the Director of Revenue and Taxation, it wouldn't then matter that we wait another, it wouldn't make sense that we wait for an entire fiscal year to be able to give DOE the funds when we can give those monies immediately. And so, I would hope that we would leave it to augment their current fiscal year budget, but this is something, again, that if they don't release the money in FY 2013, they will certainly release the money when the funds are there and are available.
Thank you, Senator Rispia. Senator Limchak?
Madam Speaker, could we ask for a recess to further discuss the point?
We're going to take a brief recess. Senator Limchak, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to amend the bill such that Section Three, Line Fourteen, strikes out the following words for FY 2013.
So, on the amendment then, which is on Page Two, Line Fourteen, the words "for fiscal year 2013" to be deleted. No objections ordered. On the motion, does anybody else who would like to speak on it? Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In regards to Section Three, Number Eighteen, I would like to ask the author, in his language for "school operations, repairs, and renovations", where would a possible set aside for sports organizations or field repairs or even paying, possibility of paying stipends for coaches fall under?
Senator, do you yield to the question? Let me take a brief recess. Let me take a brief recess. Senator McCready, you still have the floor. And was your question answered during the recess?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you.
So on the motion then, are there any other speakers before I recognize the primary author to close?
Just to close, just to close, Madam Speaker, and thank again Senator Speaker Panglinen and all our colleagues for their discussion relative to this bill. I move to name you a second co-sponsor as Education Chair.
Thank you very much. On the motion without any objections, so ordered. On the motion then to place Bill 8-32 in the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Next on the agenda is Bill Number 2-32 LS, and I recognize the primary author, Senator Morrison. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, my number two, four, yes, Bill Four.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 4-32 LS in the third reading file.
And would you like to discuss it?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
May proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill Number 4-32 contains some technical language, but its intent is quite simple. 4-32 would provide the framework for some creation of the Permanent Office of Technology within Gov Guam with statutory authority to coordinate the upgrade of Gov Guam's technology, infrastructure and information technology applications. This work is currently handled by the Bureau of Information Technology, BIT, created by the Governor's Directive. By statute, the entity is tasked with technology issues and is within the Department of Administration. DOA's enabling statute as it relates to technology contains one line. BIT operates outside of DOA's statutory framework and is subject to whatever directive the Governor decides to give it. Over the years, BIT has made some progress in bringing Gov Guam in line with advances in the technology. Our problem in that a future Governor may abolish BIT altogether. What Bill Number 4-32 would do is create a permanent office within DOA to carry out the work BIT has started. Madam Speaker, the need for technology is not temporary, and we cannot afford to have Gov Guam's efforts to make full use of technology, subject to the inclination of whomever happens to be the Governor. An office of technology must be permanent, a permanent part of Gov Guam operation, and must have statutory authority to ensure that Gov Guam, or the Government of Guam, uses technology to improve employees' efficiency and employee productivity. We must use technology for better service for our residents and businesses. We must use technology to gain immediate access to information in order to make timely and informed decisions. In order to do this, we must modernize our IT infrastructure and have a coordinated approach to the use of information technology in our departments and agencies. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me time to speak.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize the vice speaker.
Madam Speaker, I rise and supported the bill, but I just want to make a clarification. It's Bill Four as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs, so that the clerks have that. No, I understand, but the motion was just for, and I didn't want, I know in the last session, we always got, always got corrected, so I just wanted to make sure that I didn't, that it's clear that it's a substituted version that is in third reading.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. So is this Bill Four as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs? On that motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the bill? Okay, I have three. Let's start with Senator Yamashita, Senator San Nicholas, and Senator Duñez.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number 4-32 LS. This is a very good example of leveraging resources. It's something that we need to do across the government in finding where everything intersects and how to best use the resources that we have. And so, we certainly know that technology is a way to make our operations more efficient and more effective, and I believe this measure will help us better do that. And so, I appreciate this measure being introduced by the Senators, and I stand in full support. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator San Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question for the author of this legislation with respect to the funding source for the implementation of this legislation.
Senator, do you yield to the question? Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Respect to the funding source, you know, built into the, one of the bill provision that allows for a chargeback model, and what that does is basically allows for assessment of fees throughout the agencies and programs and evaluates what the requests is are. And these are cost share models that has already been done throughout the Government of Guam as respect to many agencies, but that basically will cover the, the operations over time.
Madam Speaker, so again to clarify from the author then, so in order for all of these mandates to be exercised, the, again yielding as a question to the author, the Office of Technology then will pass on all of these costs to our agencies?
Well, Madam Speaker, the goal is to establish an agency to better structure and coordinate all IT throughout the Government of Guam. And again, there's a provision here that allows for a chargeback model, again, that is already implemented in Gov Guam and is worked to fund many programs. And again, our goal here is to really first proceed in establishing this office and leveraging in line with all the data processing centers that are out there that are already, that exist today. But again, the provision there that allows for a chargeback model is there.
Senator San Nicholas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to then pose a question to the author also regarding the Bureau of Information Technology. I know that that's currently an executive branch function, and this legislation is intended to permanize that function as a separate office from the government. So is there anything that the, is there, I don't see anything in the bill, and I'd like the author to clarify for me if I'm missing it, I don't see anything in the bill that would sunset the Bureau of Information Technology. Would that continue to exist as a duplicate function with this Office of Technology?
Well, you know, that's certainly the prerogative, Madam Speaker, the prerogative of the Governor. The BIT currently as it stands is an advisory component under the Governor's office, and however the Governor wishes to proceed, proceed with the Bureau of Information Technology, it's clearly up his prerogative. Again, Madam Speaker, we're trying to create an Office of Technology more on the operational side so that we can have a well-structured and coordinated approach to IT.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to propose a, an amendment then to, to the bill on subsection 2024, Powers and Duties of the Chief Technology Officers, Page 5, Line 15. Language the effect that would direct the budget of the Bureau of Information Technology to be assumed by this new Office of Technology.
Thank you. Do you have specific language for that? Be assumed, what word would we have the clerks put in? I'm sorry, didn't, wasn't, one wasn't left here.
Mr. Speaker, can we take a one-minute recess?
All right, we'll take a recess.
Senator McCready, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I withdraw my amendment and yield to the author.
On that motion to withdraw, no objections, so ordered. Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the input from our colleagues here, and I move to table the bill.
So we just set it aside, but it would not lose its place?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
And we'll get back to it later. Okay. Thank you very much. On that motion without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number, yes, I have it here, Bill Number Nine. I recognize the primary author. Bill number, yes, I have it here, Bill Number Nine, I recognize the primary author, Speaker Panglinen.
Thank you, and since this is my seat, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to Bill Number Nine dash thirty-two C O R, and an act to add a new section, five-eight-one-four-eight, one-four-eight point one, one-four-eight point two, point three, and five-eight-one-four-nine to Chapter fifty-eight of Title Twelve Guam Code Annotated, and amend sections of Chapter fifty-eight of Title Twelve Guam Code Annotated relative to establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board, the Qualifying Certificate Accountability and Transparency Website, and for other purpose, be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to speak briefly on the bill, Madam Speaker.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as we all know, with some media releases and recently regarding the qualifying certificate programs, and some of the work that many of our members here have done over the years, reference regarding the qualifying certificate program, and looking at ways in which the program has evolved over the years, since it was first envisioned, to stimulate economic investment on Guam, provide jobs and opportunity for our people, and where it started, and where it's going, and where it has been. And one of the things that everybody seems to be concerned about is, what's the big picture with regards to the qualifying certificate program? When is enough is enough? When is more needed to stimulate? What type of activities, what type of industry shall we attract? And taking a look at what the ramifications are of the granting of these abatements and rebates, and forgiveness of, and extensions of the tax programs that are favorable to businesses, once they establish their operations here on Guam, or are enticed to start their operations here on Guam. We've seen over the past the concerns raised that the qualifying certificate program seems to be insulated, insular to the Guam Economic Development Authority, and that because these are taxes that would have been paid otherwise, that the government of Guam, the people of Guam are foregoing these taxes in exchange for investments. But when is enough, enough time has been given for these companies to recoup their investments? And what we've seen is that it seems to be a never-ending cycle, that they get an investment, they get a Q C, they come back, they change ownership, they get the same benefits, they ask for an extension, they get modifications, and we really don't see what the effect it has on the government of Guam, and where those modifications, extensions, and changes in the qualifying certificate program, that if we had gotten those revenues, or if those revenues could be mitigated in terms of the leakage and the loss by a other process of review, then maybe we have, we will be able to secure additional revenues to meet the operational requirements of this government, as we know we are all faced and challenged with finding. And so, G I D A's duty is to stimulate as much investment as they can with the granting of these certificates, and they really have an interest in doing that. In addition, G I D A receives fees for monitoring these investors, and so that's how they fund their operations. They fund their operations from the fees that they get from these qualifying certificates that they issue to these businesses. So there's almost a built-in incentive to give these qualifying certificates, because they mean, it means more money to their operations. And so, what we wanted to do in this bill, Madam Speaker, which is to create a review process that would make recommendations to the G I D A Board, we're not trying to change the qualifying certificate authority that the Board has with regards to granting or recommending these qualifying certificates, or to the governor's powers to actually approve these, but we wanted to give a dispassionate, almost unbiased, or even a biased view on behalf of the government and the people of Guam, to reviewing whether or not these qualifying certificates should be granted, extended, or modified, and what that loss in revenue means, and where else those revenues could be applied. And so, we are, in fact, adding a separate review process, composed of professionals within the government of Guam that would take a look at what impact a new qualifying certificate, a renewed qualifying certificate, or a modified qualifying certificate would have on the entire government of Guam and the resources available. And so, what we've done is put together a qualifying certificate review board that would make recommendations to the G I D A Board, and then the G I D A Board would take these recommendations, and then go through their own due diligence as a board in their final recommendation to the governor on how to structure these qualifying certificates. And so, Madam Speaker, as the bill outlines, the process, it outlines who shall be sitting on this qualifying certificate board, review board, Madam Speaker, it provides the process for reviewing them, some criteria, the minutes, I mean, the board meetings and setting up that, and then, of course, allowing then the creation of a website as well, to continue the move towards transparency that this government has really, over the last several years, moved forward on with regards to enhancing availability of information through technology such as websites. And so, it would create that so that people can access applications, reports of qualifying certificate recipients, contributions that they've made in terms of jobs generated, as well as how much taxes have been abated or rebated. All of this information would, of course, ensure that confidentiality and privacy are maintained for the individual companies for specific information that may be proprietary, and so, that would be put on a website without compromising that. And then, of course, the final product would be a report that is generated by this qualifying certificate review board. The members of the qualifying certificate review board, Madam Speaker, would be the chief economist of the Department of Labor, the chief economist of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Director of Revenue and Taxation, and other professionals within the government of Guam, Madam Speaker. And so, again, Madam Speaker, it provides another scrutiny, another level of review, that is, that has no interest in terms of, for their own agencies with regards to getting any kind of direct benefit, such as G I D A has now, with regards to the fact that you grant the Q C, you get monitoring money, you use it for your operations, you use it for pay raises, you use it for travel. And so, we wanted to present another review process for this program that has worked for Guam, and gives us an opportunity to take a look at and see whether or not the decisions we're going to be making today and in the future, as well as in the past, help us guide some of the issues that have raised concerns by members of the public, as well as some members of our government officials, and many members of this body with regards to the granting of these Q Cs, their modifications, and their extensions. So, I ask my colleagues for their support, Madam Speaker, of this bill. Thank you, and since this is my seat.
You're welcome, Madam Speaker Panglinen. On the motion, I recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. I commend the author for its introduction. As you may know, Madam Speaker, the qualifying certificates have been a special project of my investigations over the last term, and I really look forward to this website so that I don't need to FOIA everything that I need from the agencies to determine. And I look forward to this website so that we can get the information that would be necessary for this board and for us as a community to determine whether or not we're making the best decisions. I mean, in anything that we plan on doing, Madam Speaker, I know it's a favorite phrase of yours, you know, development at whatever cost, at all cost, and so, we need to know what that cost is, and I think this review board would be an excellent vehicle with which to make that determination. Madam Speaker, when I began looking at the Q Cs in the last term, and I noticed that there were some of them that had not been in compliance, and their license hadn't been revoked, or their certificate hadn't been revoked, I was a little shocked, and I wanted to find out how much money we had lost in taxes, and we couldn't get that because of the confidentiality. And I appreciate the author's foresight in requiring a disclosure on that amount without disclosing proprietary information as it relates to the operation of the corporation that receives the certificates. But the other thing that I discovered while I was doing this investigation with last term, Madam Speaker, was that G I D A had actually thought about trying to figure out a way of being able to determine whether or not they were making the best decisions. They had contracted with the College of Business and Public Administration at the university, and more specifically, Dr. Ruwan at The Economist up at U O G, to conduct a, prepare a study on how to be able to review Q Cs and determine whether or not it was in the best interest of the people of Guam. The review, the report was completed in two thousand and eight. G I D A never asked for the report after it had been completed. I'm not sure whether or not, in their discussions prior to, while it was being written, they got wind of what might be in it, and didn't want to know what was going to be required, and didn't want to go through the process that she was recommending. And during her investigation, during her study, Dr. Ruwan wanted to get some information from G I D A and from Rev and Tax on how much taxes had been abated as a result of the Q Cs, and she couldn't get that information. So what she was able to do in this, what she was contracted to do, was to do a three-part study, what would be the best way to be able to determine what would be in the best interest of people. And so, she wrote up this whole big thirty-page paper on how to be able to analyze these things. She got the formula, but she couldn't get the numbers to plug in there, to make a determination of whether or not each one of these Q Cs had been and are in the best interest of the people of Guam. And she couldn't get that information from G I D A or Rev and Tax because of quote-unquote confidentiality prohibitions that didn't allow her to be able to make that final plug in the numbers, so that she could tell us whether or not Q C one was in the best interest, or which ones were or were not. And so, I really am happy that this piece of legislation, though not specifically making mention of Dr. Ruwan's, I guess, formula on page four, does list certain things that this review board has to look at before it makes a recommendation to the governor, that the Q C should be granted, or the Q C should be extended. And so, I agree with the author of this piece of legislation, that we're losing considerable amount of money, or, and we need to know whether or not that amount that we're losing is paying back and resulting in more employment for this island, and whether or not it's a net positive or a net negative to the community. So, I rise in full support of this legislation, and I really hope that the members of this legislature will join the author and myself in this endeavor to improve the system, because I'm not proposing, or not advocating, neither is the author, a termination of the program, because it is imperative that when the governor goes to Vietnam in a couple of months, or to Singapore for some of the trade missions for new hotels, that we are able to determine whether or not these will be in the best interest of the people, and we can get new investors to Guam. So, none of us are proposing that. We just want to make sure that when it is done, it is done with a net positive to the people of Guam, that the lost taxes will be a fraction of the amount of taxes that we earn as a community from the operation in the employment of dozens, if not hundreds, of new employees, or the fact that it brings a whole new industry that improves our GDP. And so, that is not the intent of this piece of legislation, it's just trying to make sure that we, as a community, make the best decision for ourselves in how and what we provide tax abatements for. And so, I rise in full support, and I ask for the support of this piece of legis-
Thank you very much, and Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in, actually, I should say, in a cautious attempt, or with caution, but wanting to support, and definitely supporting the intent of this bill. I know that throughout the campaign season, and also, as the good speakers mentioned, the heightened emphasis on G I D A and tax certificates certainly is something that our community continues to debate. I also, Madam Speaker, you know, as really understanding and wanting to appreciate, and having appreciated over the years, the father of G I D A, my uncle Frank DePerez, I'm sure that in this time, were he here, he would also probably anticipate additional scrutiny, understanding the overall condition of our government and its very limited resources. Madam Speaker, it also is in keeping with other measures that I have introduced and others have introduced, in terms of capturing revenues, and certainly ensuring that benefits that are given that deplete our revenues are such that they follow in strict compliance to their intent. I would like to ask if the author could yield to something he didn't expand upon during his discussions on the bill, and I just wanted to get his intention, and see if this could potentially be a showstopper before I commit my full support, so if the author would yield. Under, on page seven, line twenty-one, under recommendations, five-eight-one-two-six, new regulation or new intention added here, "The G I D A Board of Directors shall not provide any recommendations to the governor of Guam without receipt of the review of the review board's detailed report as required." We all know, and I've seen situations whereby boards, for whatever reason, as I said, in the intent of this legislation, there certainly has a lot of accountability built in. At times, they're not efficient, and the requirements now of even the public's input, the public hearing process, I would like to hear from the author in terms of, is this potentially, could this potentially, you know, stop the process from going forward if there were, you know, critical need to move forward on any type of investment that would require tax incentives?
Speaker Panglinen, you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't believe that this would be a showstopper. I believe that when we look at who we were going to put on this board, we looked at people within this government who are responsible and responsive, and that don't have an ax to grind one way or the other. We put in the, like I said, the chief economist, the attorney general, Rev and Tax, and so, I don't think that, and I don't anticipate that these people would- And so, I don't think that, and I don't anticipate that these people would intentionally not issue a report to prevent an application from moving forward. I think these are professionals and they would issue a report, give it their best work effort, and present the best product and the best analysis that they can. And then, the GIDEA Board still has the, again, final say and the authority to approve and then send on to the governor for approval. So, I don't anticipate that these people will be playing games with the whole process. I think they understand the importance of this program. They understand that people who come to Guam, who may want to, who have come to Guam and at some time, maybe at our invitation, that they expect to deal with a professional process and professional people. And I don't think the attorney general, who's up for, you know, who's elected by the people of Guam, or the chief economist, who looks at the industries and the economy of Guam and what it takes to move the economy forward, is going to play any kind of game. I think they're going to be straight-up people, and that's how we found them, if I could just give a little bit more of an elaboration. That's how we found the process has actually evolved in the creation of the Special Economic Service Group. As you know, that was a group that was established by statute through this body to take a look at the budget process. And we have had meetings of the Special Economic Service. We've looked at the budget that's reviewed by the governor, I mean, that's submitted by the governor, the revenue estimates. And when we chair, and I chair that meeting, and I call the members, they come to the meeting, they give me their best guess, we put it before the body to vote, and we move it forward, it goes to the Committee on Appropriations, and then it finally comes to this body for its final approval. So, I don't anticipate, and two of those people are on the Special Economic Service Group. I don't see them boycotting meetings because they don't want us to move forward with the adoption of the final revenue numbers. It just hasn't worked that way, and I've found that I've been able to deal with some very professional people, and two of those are on this review board itself. So, I don't think it's going to be showstopper. I've found that it hasn't been. You know, Senator Rispio, in creating the Special Economic Service Group, Special Accounting Service, saw a process that can add dispassionate and unbiased review process that takes a look at the bigger picture that may elude us, or we may not even want to look at as political animals, and is able to give a more dispassionate review process. So, I don't think that, and we put it this way, because I think our experience has been, it's worked in the past, especially in the Special Economic Service, very similar to the process of adopting the revenue estimates by the Special Economic Service Group, that I can see in terms of having this group and this bunch of professionals review the applications, request for modifications, request for extension, issue their report, and then let the current process move forward, just as we've seen it work with the Special Economic Service Group and the budget process. So, that's my response to the question of the good senator from, not Afaguma, Afamine, from Afamine. Situs Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Panglinen. Senator Duñez, you stay on the floor.
Situs Massey, locally, Mr. Speaker. And I'm sure this was part of his closing, but I certainly did need to ask the question because I found it to be a very important component of this piece of legislation, Madam Speaker. And certainly, in answering the question, it would never have been my position to consider that there would be intent. It's simply the following language that mentions, or that is currently law, that the expiration on the 61st day for this to be considered disapproved or anything moved up. I just wanted to bring that added caution and understanding that while extremely well-intended here, and I agree with the retiring good speaker, that these are all professional people that will be appointed here, people that have responsibilities to our government outside of their main responsibility of guarding and being a keeper of our government. So, I'm definitely inclined to agree at that point. Madam Speaker, I'd like to continue to listen, but I find this proposal very interesting and definitely timely. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this bill.
You're very welcome, Senator Duñez. On the motion, I have Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too stand in support of Bill Number 9-32. As the previous speaker had said, some of us have introduced measures that have gotten passed that look to making the most of investments in the government subsidies, and I appreciate the idea that a qualifying certificate review board will be able to ensure that the deals that we have made are, that the loops are closed. I am now speaking specifically to Law 31-118, which we passed during the 31st Guam Legislature, Madam Speaker, where any business that gets some sort of government subsidy, which includes a qualifying certificate, is supposed to be providing 1% of that cost to arts, to culture, and in that legislation that we passed last term, if they didn't put up art, they could give that amount of money to the Chomor Department. And then, that Chomor Department would come up with grant rules and regs to further invest in our arts across our island. I've had some difficulty in getting progress reports from GIDEA and from the Chomor Division, or the Chomor Department, and I know I'm not saying the full title correctly. And I'm thinking this review board, and I know it's moving forward, and I know I've learned a big lesson about moving forward and not looking back last term, but I'm hoping that this review board will ensure that everything that they're supposed to be reviewing as far as QC's go is actually addressed and put on the table. And so, then perhaps I can go ahead and ask the author of this bill a question. I probably know the answer, but is there any, Madam Speaker, the question posed is this: What can be done for current qualifying certificate holders who have not been doing everything they're supposed to be doing, like the 1% art law? I don't know, is that just lost? Is it something that I just need to keep talking to GIDEA about? And I'm thinking, you know, moving forward, that this board would be able to do that, but I don't know if that's a fair question. I don't know if I'm supposed to be doing that online or offline. Thank you.
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we structured this review board to review application for either new modifications or extensions of qualifying certificates themselves. We did not want to give any operational responsibilities to this review board. So, on the compliance section, on whether or not the QC recipients are responding and meeting what they have pledged to do in exchange for these tax abatements and rebatements, and rebates are the purview of the internal operational structure of GIDEA, which is their compliance and monitoring. And that's really who we have to continue to follow up with. But I wanted to be very careful. Because of the sensitive nature of the qualifying certificate program, you know, Guam is very unique in that we have the ability to affect the federal income tax rates of corporations and individuals of companies that are part of companies. And so, we are very careful in terms of how we amend the qualifying certificate program and the GIDEA-enabling statutes because of litigation that has occurred in the past, and we don't want to threaten our ability to do this. So, we don't go into the operational side of this, of the implementation of the program itself. So, we would have to continue to follow compliance and monitoring for some of those terms and conditions.
Senator Yamashita, you stay on the floor. Are you satisfied? Okay. Thank you. On the motion, I recognize Senator Limtiako.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm in support of the bill. I am concerned that it does add another level of bureaucracy to the process, but I do believe that the intent of it is to require us that we do our due diligence in order to be, to ensure that we do manage our resources and we are physically responsible with our tax dollars. So, I am in full support of the bill. I do have a question for the author, just a point of clarification. Regarding the QCAT website, is this a website that is just going to be incorporated into the existing GIDEA website, just to help reduce costs? It doesn't require an altogether new website or URL, right?
Speaker Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Speaker, no, we didn't really want to recreate a brand-new website itself, but it can be folded into the current GIDEA website with a drop-down menu and so forth. So, we didn't want to set up a whole new system for it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, I have Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, and I also rise to commend the sponsor of this bill and to recognize his persistence in wanting to make sure that the whole qualifying certificate program, as envisioned decades ago, is really, it really holds true to the tenants of that provision and that law, which was created to provide for, to assist growing and emerging industries. But as we've seen over the years, that certainly has not been the case, Madam Speaker, and there have been numerous attempts to want to make sure that the existing QC holders are held so that they can be in compliance. And so, I appreciate the reference to the special economic services and the special accounting services process, which has these classified entrenched bureaucrats be the ones to do the revenue projections for the governor of Guam. And I echo the comments of Speaker Benn when he said that this provided for a greater level of transparency, and as a result, it allowed this government to have revenue projections that are on target. Madam Speaker, the current administration doesn't give enough credit to our appropriations chair and the process by which revenue projections are estimated. And it's because of the SAS and the SES that there's a greater level of honesty, and every time you have more levels of transparency, I don't see it as bureaucracy, Madam Speaker. I see it as more opportunity to be honest about what our situation really is. And so, this five-member qualifying certificate review board will have that opportunity to really look at these qualifying certificate applications to make sure that we understand what the impacts are and how much revenue will be lost to the governor of Guam, provided more revenue will be realized as a result of this industry that would be supported by QC program. I'm seeing here in this bill the requirements of the qualifying certificate review board, and if you go all the way to page seven, it says, "The GIDEA Board of Directors shall not provide any recommendations to the governor of Guam without, to the governor of Guam without receipt and review of the review board's detailed report as required by these sections." And so, what I want to offer, Madam Speaker, as a friendly amendment, because on page four, it lists the duties and responsibilities of the GIDEA Board, but it really doesn't tell them when the report's due. And so, what I want to do is insert, and I would appreciate the guidance here of the sponsor of the bill, to insert after "report," that's on page four, line one, to have new language prior to the GIDEA Board's disposition of any application for new or existing qualifying certificates. This report shall be provided to the GIDEA Board of Directors and shall include, and then everything else remains the same. So that my amendment, what I'm offering, will make it clear that this review board certainly is empowered to review the applications for new and existing qualifying certificates, but also make it abundantly clear that they're the one entity, recognizing that this is the one entity that would have to move on these applications before anyone else can, namely, the GIDEA Board of Directors and the governor of Guam.
Senator, I would like to require, though, to have a copy of that because it's long. Speaker Panglinen, would you like to speak on the amendment? Yes, we are. That's why I did ask him. Yes, please. So, we're going to take a brief recess. Second session, Senator Rispio on your amendment, and everyone should have a copy.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Again, Madam Speaker, I recognize it on page seven, line 21, it says, "The GIDEA Board of Directors shall not-"
of Directors shall not provide any recommendations to the Governor of Guam without receiving a review of the review board's detailed report." However, what I'm offering as additional language to the bill is to make it clear that the review board has to provide a detailed report prior to GITA's, the GITA Board's disposition of any application for new or existing qualifying certificates. And I, I want to make sure that in a, if you're going to be thinking this through process-wise, I want to make sure that the review board recognizes its power and authority under this hopefully would-be statute to provide a detailed report before GITA can even move forward. And so what we've seen in the past, we've seen the boards of certain agencies move forward, actually, no, the administrators of certain agencies move forward, then you have the board kind of play catch-up, or we see the administration itself move forward, and then back the legislature into a corner where the legislature would have to play catch-up. And we've seen this in many, I can cite many examples, but what I'm attempting to do here is to make it clear that when an application for a QC or applicant, for a new or amended QC, when that's submitted to GITA, that this review board has the authority, which it does, to review this application and what its impact may be, what its benefits may be. And then, and then they would submit that to the GITA Board, so you don't have the GITA Board moving forward without the review board, or you don't have the Governor moving forward without either one. And so I, I offer this amendment in the hopes that we're clear that in order for this thing to be ultimately approved or disapproved, this review board, as envisioned by Speaker Panglinen, would have the authority and be empowered from the very beginning.
Thank you, Senators. So on the amendment, and everyone should have a copy, which is on page four, line one, after the word "report," is to add in the new language, "Prior to the GITA Board's disposition of any application for new or existing qualifying certificates, this report shall be provided to the GITA Board of Directors and shall include." So, and the rest of the amendment will be to delete the words on page line, I'm up, page four, line one, the words "to the GITA Board of Directors to include." Does everybody understand the amendment? On the amendment, no objections, so ordered. Senator San Nicolás, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Coming from the financial industry, many of us also are aware of an infamous name, Bernie Madoff, and a $50 billion Ponzi scheme that he was able to orchestrate, that, to the detriment of many investors and the entire Wall Street system. And the reason why this gentleman was able to orchestrate that was because he was the trustee, the transfer agent, and the financial advisor, all in one, within the operation that he was running. And since that time, it has become apparent to the financial industry that it is so important for us to have the necessary checks and balances whenever we're dealing with any kind of operation that is materially benefiting while at the same time responsible for monitoring and enforcing. And so I rise in full support of this bill as authored by Speaker Panglinen, because it provides that necessary framework for us to be able to review the qualifying certificates as they come up for application or renewal and determine whether or not the qualifying certificate applicant is in compliance with the provisions as established in their qualifying certificate. So I would just like to commend the author for introducing the bill and rise in full support of it, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator San Nicolás on the motion. Senator Rodriguez, oh, Senator Rodriguez. Sergeant Adams, can you check if Senator Rodriguez is? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the motion? Thank you, Senator. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this, of bill number eight, Madam Speaker, or bill number nine. I think it's a, it's a first step. It's a start in assessing our qualifying certificate program. I think the, you know, one of the bigger pictures we need to take a look at as a body is looking at certain industries that are currently on this, on this program. And what this bill does is, it has a trigger before this review board looks at all the QC's that we have, and I believe it's about 20 or less than that. I could be wrong, but somewhere around that, that number. And the problem I have here, Madam Speaker, is that for, at least for the, for the contractual agreements that I've seen, the qualifying certificate contract that I've seen, that it's correct that you must, before any amendment or any renewal or extension of that contract is approved, you must go through this, this review board. However, there are certain contract QC's right now, Madam Speaker, that all it takes is that you provide, at a time of expiration, a time of renewal, all that's needed is that you provide a certificate of compliance, that you are, you are in compliance with your QC, and that there's an automatic renewal. And so that, if that indeed is a fact, and that is something that's written on their contractual agreement, it's not covered within this, within this legislation. And so I'd like to insert a provision here, Madam Speaker, and I don't know, and maybe there's something I need to speak with legal counsel, but what I would like to do is that in contracts such as those that I just mentioned, that there is automatic renewal, and the only requirement is that you have a certificate of compliance, I believe those QC's should also go through this review board. And so I'd like to work with our legal counsel to determine, first of all, because these are contractual agreements, if we are able to make amendments such as those. And so, well, if we could take a few minutes after I'm done to, to consult with legal counsel. The other, the other issue I'd like to bring up to the body is that as we look at ways now to reform the QC program as, as we are doing with this, we must really look at these industries that are currently benefiting from these QC's. Look at, and I encourage my colleagues, Madam Speaker, to look at the inception of some of these industries and why they were, you know, why they were given these, these very generous benefits, and how it has impacted our people, and what kind of impact it was supposed to have on our people. And so, as I said, Madam Speaker, this is a good start. I like the fact as well as there is a website that would be established, but I'd like to now ask if there's, if we could recess for a few minutes so I can consult with legal counsel on that amendment.
We're going to take recess until such time that Senator Rodriguez is ready for his amendment. Second session, Senator Rodriguez, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Was able to, to, to speak to legal counsel and try to get some assistance and guidance on how to properly word this. And so I'd like to place an amendment on page four, line 19, after the word "application" to include "and/or notification." Line 19, page four. And so what this does, Madam Speaker, for those contracts that do not require a beneficiary to apply for any renewal of their, of their, of their QC, that this legislation now would still require the review board to do an assessment as, as stated and as, as proffered in this, in this legislation. Although it may not, those, those, those reviews that happen on, on these contracts, you know, may not be binding, may not require, you know, a board to, you know, to review it and to ultimately sign a renewal, at least the people of Guam would know, you know, at least at that time, what the impacts are and what, you know, what, you know, what taxes are not being realized by our people because of those continuing qualifying certificates.
So on the amendment, which is on page four, line 19, is to add the word "after application and/or notifications." Any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Muniabarns, you're recognized.
See, just small c, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'll be real brief. I just want to stand and rise in support of bill number nine dash thirty-two in reference to the qualifying certificates. And as the previous speaker spoke, if there was one thing that I like about the qualify, about this bill is the qualifying certificate accountability transparency website. Again, as we look at technology, Madam Speaker, and as we look at getting information across to the community and making sure that our government is accountable and transparent in the things they do, I think this provision is, makes it very clear. It also, when we look at this, establishing this qualifying certificate review board, it lists who the members would be, which would include the government agencies of revenue tax, the attorney generals, the chief economists from the Department of Labor, and the Bureau of Statistics and Plants. Again, giving a full collaboration, working with GITA and, and the qualifying certificate program. So I just want to thank the author for doing this and introducing this legislation, and say I rise in support of it. Senator Massey.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, there being none, they don't like to recognize the mover, I mean, the primary author, then to close and move it to third reading.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Once again, Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful comments and participation in the discussion of this, and certainly for the amendments that were offered as well. I think that they've added to the bill. As I mentioned, Madam Speaker, there are many, many members of this body, both past and present, that have continued to look at the QC and try to examine it, and try to ensure that the original intention of the qualifying certificate program, which is to stimulate economic investment, provide opportunities for our own people, and the terms and conditions that we envision being able to do in order for, for these off-island companies to come to Guam and participate in our lives here, not only from an economic perspective, but from a social and, and community perspective, because there are many terms and conditions that can be placed upon these companies, but that they comply, they become good corporate citizens, and they do what they say they're going to do. And what we wanted to do is ensure that those original good intentions continue to be part of not only the spirit of the law, but certainly the letter of the law. And I think this would allow us the opportunity to do that. Once again, Madam Speaker, before I close, I'd like to move that members of this body who have been very, very forthright and, and dogged in terms of trying to ensure and look at the program, that I would like to make an amendment that I add Senator B.J. Cruz as the second co-sponsor in this bill, and Dennis Rodriguez, the chairman of GITA, as the third co-sponsor in this bill. So that would be my ending motion, Madam Speaker.
And the motion, then, to place the vice speaker and Senator Rodriguez as co-sponsors of this bill, without any objections, so ordered. So on the motion then to place bill nine dash thirty-two, the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senators. We're going to move on to thirteen dash thirty-two, and I recognize the vice speaker.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, just been informed by the chairman of rules of the committee of affairs.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to place bill thirteen dash thirty-two in third reading filed, and ask him to speak briefly on the bill.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, this is a bill that I introduced in the last legislature, and, but unfortunately was not able to get it through with, towards the end of the term. I reintroduce it again this year, because I think it's imperative that these laws play through address this.
Thank you very much. I guess I better start. I'll move bill thirteen dash thirty-two to the third reading file and ask for an opportunity to please speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, this is a- able to travel to Seattle, Washington with members of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse to a alcohol conference. And it was brought to my attention at that point that Guam was one of the few states or territories that had not passed a social host bill. And I was asked by the members of the conference if I would consider the introduction on Guam. I told them at that point that I would consider it. When I came back, I was still suffering from the repercussions of my earlier legislation that some of you still have not forgiven me for and members of the community have not forgiven me for raising the drinking age and shortening the hours that the bars are open. I still get that on a daily base, comments about that on a daily basis. But at any rate, I really thought about this social host bill and was thinking about introducing it, but then I wasn't sure if I was going to get any more support from the members of the legislature. I then found a very unlikely ally in this. Madam Speaker, in this hall, you hosted a close-up group of high school kids that came together to discuss ways in which to be able to, or come up with ideas on pieces of legislation that they thought should be introduced. And I think we were all seated up there when the first recommendation from that group of close-up students was that some kind of legislation ought to be introduced to hold adults liable for providing alcohol to minors. And I was shocked. I was pleasantly shocked, actually, and I was very excited about it. Coincidentally and unfortunately, about the same time that the close-up was introducing this piece of legislation, there was a very tragic accident that occurred on Route 4. Six young people, 16 and 15 years of age, were driving down Route 4, and they swerved off the road and smashed into a telephone pole. One young man lost his life in that accident. A young woman was maimed so badly that about four months later, while I was in the Philippines for a checkup, I ran into her family members that were there because she was still in the hospital from, suffering from the injuries that she sustained. And all the rest of the students noticed that, that, I mean, or were there and witnessed the death of one of their friends. The other tragic thing was this young 16-year-old, a bright young man, was in prison, well, actually, he was arrested, and they finally decided to charge him as an adult. He faces 15 to 30 years in prison. Madam Speaker, by the time he gets out, even if he has the least amount of, the shortest sentence, he will be older than some members of this legislature. He is going to spend, at the very least, 15 years in jail because he had been drinking. The adults that provided the alcohol to these young people is sitting pretty, smiling, enjoying their life. Hopefully, they have some regret at having done it, but I'm not even sure that might have happened. But they're out there and they suffer no repercussion as a result of that stupid, stupid decision to provide alcohol to these young people. And all of these families have suffered gravely as a result of it. And the person, the adult that provided it has, is suffering nothing as a result of it. So this social host bill adds two new sections to the code. The first one, it provides a new definition for furnishing, which means to knowingly and intentionally supply, give, or provide to or allow person under 21 years of age alcohol. And then we add another section that any person 21 years or older who sells, furnishes, or provides alcoholic beverages to a person under the age of 21, or owns, occupies, or controls premises on which alcoholic beverages are consumed by any person under the age of 21, and who knows, knows of alcohol consumption by person under the age of 21 on such premises, and who reasonably could have prohibited or prevented such alcohol consumption, shall be punished by a fine of not more than $2,000, or imprisoned for no more than one year or both, that shall be liable for all injuries or damages caused by the intoxicated person under age 21. And an intoxicated person under the age 21 who causes an injury shall have no right of action under this part. That's to make sure that the child that drinks can't sue, but that the adult can, the adult can be sued by the other persons that have been injured as a result of the accident. And having heard from the young students and the fact that they believe that it was imperative that adults be held responsible for the, for the, their irresponsible act of providing alcohol to these youngsters, gave me the impetus and the support that I needed to come forth with this legislation last term. And though it didn't pass, I have reintroduced it this year and want it to be the first bill that I report out this year in the hopes of addressing this issue because it still bothers me that this young man is going to be in jail for 15 years as a result of that accident. And he's already going to have to suffer the knowledge that his act, this accident resulted in the death of one of his friends and the maiming of another beautiful young woman and the trauma that all the other young people in that car will live for the rest of their life, having been witnesses and involved in this accident. So I asked my colleagues for their support. I understand the ramifications of this, Madam Speaker. It's no secret that I used to be one of the biggest party throwers and party goers on this island. And so it's not that I don't understand the implication of this, but it is imperative that if we know that we, that there are individuals under the age of 21 that are consuming alcohol and there is a way that you can stop this, you, you have a responsibility as an adult to do so. And if you don't, and that results in any injuries or, God forbid, a fatality, that you should suffer some repercussion as a result of it. And we all should be responsible in how we behave around our young people and make sure that we are more attentive to our surroundings and make sure that young people don't consume alcohol in our homes or in our, at our parties. And so I'm, it wasn't my phone, Madam Speaker.
It wasn't the phone. It's not a phone either. Your role is preemie.
And any electronic devices that disrupts.
Anyway, I, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that that wasn't mine.
No, I know where it came from.
But anyway, I asked for my colleagues' support in this. And Madam Speaker, I know you were my co-sponsor the last term, and I apologize for not listing you this time. So I'd also like to make a motion that you be added as second co-sponsor in this 32nd Guam Legislature introduction. Thank you.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. On the motion, Senator Duñez, you recognize.
Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 13-32. Madam Speaker, I joined the good vice speaker in the past, having to endure the pains and criticism of supporting the raising of the drinking age to 21. Madam Speaker, I chaired during the last administration a very valuable and continuing council that I know you've visited a number of times, and actually goes back to our good friend Senator Lulian Guerrero's time in overseeing this council that has just blossomed under the auspices and direction of Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, and that's the Peace Council. This council, Madam Speaker, brings together all nonprofit regulatory agencies within the government of Guam that deal with substance abuse, especially when it's dealing with our youth. Their top two recommendations over the past five years have been to do everything that they can to lessen the opportunity and exposure of our young people under the age of 21 to two substances. That's alcohol and tobacco. Madam Speaker, we all know, even with recent events, that there's plenty of illicit drugs out there and drugs that are prohibited by law that certainly would grab the attention of anybody or any, you know, government grappling with that issue. But Madam Speaker, a lot of times it is the legal substances that are under our nose that cause some of the greatest problems that we have. And I did not see the full committee report, but I will, I will ask the vice speaker, and if not, I will seek a letter of support. And the data attached to, under the Peace Council, their great amount of research that's been taking place for now the last seven years, and they continue that grant under a number of different arrangements to include suicide prevention. And so, Madam Speaker, I, I just have to say that this was one of the issues that consistently came up within the Peace Council's meetings in terms of goals and objectives to achieve, and that was to reduce our young people's exposure to alcohol at every possible entry point. And we know, and I tell you, the one thing that I always appreciated by every speaker that ever spoke at the Peace Council, they would start by saying, "I love Maan and I love Guam, and I know that alcohol at parties is not cultural." So the bottom line is, is there are huge implications. There's a huge amount of responsibility that we all have to take for ourselves. And I, once again, am very encouraged by the bravery of our good vice speaker. This is very important legislation. And at this point, Madam Speaker, putting aside any inhibitions to show that I'm not proud, I asked for the vice speaker, when he closes, to be the third co-sponsor if possible. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this important bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. On the motion, Senator Agun, you recognize. Senator Agun.
Sejuus Maasie, like, Madam Speaker. I'm going to make this fairly brief because, you know, when I look at legislation, I look at the intent behind it and really the justification in terms of how this would impact our community. And I think that if you take a look at the legislation that the sponsor of this proposal had proffered before and is now public law, increasing the age from 18 to 21 says absolutely no one under the age of 21 should drink alcohol slash beer, anything that has liquor in it. And that's why I consider this a common sense legislation. And you look at the committee report, Madam Speaker, the only issue that I have is we have a lot of people out there that share the same sentiments with regards to a proposal like this. And to see, unfortunately, that we didn't get testimony to support this or to question the intent or to propose amendments, I think it's, it's kind of unfortunate. But it goes back to what I just shared with you a little earlier. The drinking age in Guam is 21 and not less. If, in fact, based on this provision, you allow for anyone to break the law, then you have to face the repercussions, and that's what this legislation would provide. And I certainly encourage our people in future public hearings for legislation such as this, which would really not only reinforce existing law, but also bring it to a different level in terms of making sure that there's added teeth to enforcing and ensuring that individuals who consent to similar situations or situations under these conditions that they are, they are properly, I guess, dealt with with the law. So I stand in full support of this legislation, Madam Speaker, and I commend the sponsor for initiating it, Doug Lynn Sejuus Maasie.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Sejuus Maasie, talu, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of the good vice speaker's legislation on 13-32. And this legislation, Madam Speaker, does establish those specific fines for persons over the age of 21 who sells, furnishes, provides alcohol, owns, occupies, or controls premises on which alcohol, alcohol beverages are consumed by persons under the age of 21, who knows of underage consumption of alcohol, and who reasonably could have prohibited or prevented such alcohol consumption. Madam Speaker, as I share some of the sentiments of the retiring speakers that spoke here this morning on this bill, you really don't know the damaging effect of legislation like this that is not in place until it happens to someone within your family. And I just want to say, many years ago, I, my husband's nephew got into a really big accident and several lives were lost, and he paid the price. And he shared that if he could do it all over again, he would have never drunk, drank, but the, but the damage was already done. Was it a big lesson? Could it have been prevented? Could have, could have things been done differently? It could have? But the severity of drinking and driving and being, and folks giving alcohol to people who are underage to drink deserves to be punished also. And for me, I just want to say, it's legislation like this that makes me proud to say I'm not afraid to stand up and saying I support efforts like this so that our island can truly realize that we do want to make a difference, we do want to make a change, and things like this are not cultural. We're supposed to be able to be set to be good abiding citizens, but also, more importantly, is to set, be a good representative by setting good examples. And this is one legislation that, that truly says who we are as leaders. And I just want to thank the good vice speaker for giving me the opportunity to rise in support and to you, Madam Speaker, to support this effort as it truly means a lot to me. Senator Maasie.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Vice speaker, then, to close.
Madam Speaker, thank you. Oh, I see a hand go up.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Senator Lim Tiaku.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a couple of questions, if the author would yield to some questions. Under, under 3436, is there any specific reason why the language reads "any person 21 years or older who furnishes"? You know, considering in the event that individuals do have access to the alcohol and can furnish it, let's say they are between the ages of 18 and 21, was there a specific reason why it just relates to those that furnish alcohol that are 21 years or older? And also, in the event of Section 2 of 3436, owns, occupies, or controls premises, what happens in the event that, you know, are we to assume that everybody involved in this process is to be subject to these fines as well as the damages that are listed in A through D? For example, if I am an owner of a bar and I employ people, I believe I have a reasonable requirement... For example, if I am an owner of a bar, and I employ people, I believe I have a reasonable requirement to prohibit the sale of alcohol by training my staff to properly make sure they ask for identification. So in the event that my staff doesn't do it, the manager of the staff doesn't do it, the owner of the facility or the business doesn't do it, are they all subject to these, the fines and requirements associated in A through D?
Vice Speaker, do you yield to the questions?
Yes, I do. On the very last part of the question, this was not intended to be an all expansive dram act, because we didn't want to go that far. It's just trying to control those that are selling it. If you don't have any training, then you should be held liable. But if you've done everything that you could to make sure that your staff is trained, and they check the IDs at the door, and they're doing everything that they can do, then you won't be held liable. But if you make no effort to do anything about controlling or preventing it, then you will have to suffer the repercussions for it. You can't just say, "Well, I have this license, and I'm going to sell to whoever wants, and I'm not going to do anything about it." And as it relates to those under the age of twenty-one, I was only trying to address the adults, because I didn't think that any, well, not that I'm that naive, but people under twenty-one aren't supposed to be able to have, been able to purchase alcohol, and so if they get it from somebody else, then I want to hold the adult that sold it to the eighteen-year-old, or provided it to the eighteen-year-old, to provide it to the sixteen-year-old, I want the one twenty-one years and older to be the one that suffers the repercussion, not necessarily the person, the intermediary, because they're not supposed to be able to legally possess, to be able to furnish it.
Senator Lim Tiaku, you still have the floor?
Madam Speaker, thank you. In light of the fact that a legal argument can be made that this could be all encompassing, everybody involved in the chain could potentially be subject to this law, could I request for a recess to discuss with the author?
Yeah, we're going to take a brief recess. Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize?
Madam Speaker, I'd like an opportunity to continue this discussion, so I ask that we set this aside, and let's go to lunch.
So we're going to take a recess, then, until two o'clock this afternoon.